I now call Huntsville City Council meeting to order. If all they were like to and able to, please rise for the invocation led by Pastor Dennis Fakes, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Colonel Oshewski.
Let us pray. Oh God, as spiritual beings in human bodies, we meet today to conduct matters of business important to this community. Guide our hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion beneficial to all. Thank you for being our source of guidance this evening. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Thank you Mr. Oshewski. The minutes from the March 27th meeting have been received and will stand approved if there's no objections. We're now at resolutions and special recognitions. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Harry Hobbs, Kenny Anderson, and Sarah Crocker to come forward. And Sarah, congratulations. Your parents are here. Rabbi and Mrs. Honan, thank y'all for coming. We appreciate y'all coming tonight. Harry has a Youth of the Month for this month.
We're so excited, even bells are ringing. Our winner this month is Ms. Mariah Goulet. She has done an excellent job in her local community. Come on up ma'am, come on up. You can stand right here by Ms. Sarah and right near the mayor there. And it's a Kodak moment, parents, at this point. But Mariah has done so many great things in her community. She's very active in her local church and the local dance ministry, as well as working with the youth in her local church and the newsletter staff. And she's so active in the local school there at Sparkman High School. She's a junior, up and coming senior, future business leaders of America. She works at homeless shelters, thrift shops, local youth clubs, and Harvest Elementary School. She makes people feel lazy. She gives back everywhere she goes, at home, church, and in her community. This special young lady recently went to Washington DC to represent local youth in the areas of health and just what it's going to take to keep our youth healthy and so they can take over this good world. We've got to leave it in a good condition for these young leaders just like this. So with that said, we just want to congratulate her. She's our April Star 99.1, Caffey, Young Citizen of the Month, and we're just so proud of her. So we're going to start presenting her a few things, and she does want to say a little thank you after we get finished. Go ahead, Ms. Sarah.
Well, we're just so proud to be able to honor you today. And we've got a certificate, and it's from Caffey Star 99.1 and the Human Relations Commission of the City of Huntsville. And we're proud to honor Mariah Goulet as the Caffey Star 99.1 Young Citizen, Young Star Citizen of the Month. And it's signed by the mayor, the Human Relations Commission, Caffey, the Multi-Affairs Office, DynaCorp, and Star 99.1.
It's so wonderful to see young citizens helping the community the way you do. And you're such an inspiration for all the young people that we have here in Huntsville. It just warms my heart to see folks like you. It's just wonderful. We have a small token from DynaCorp International that we'd like to give you. There's an envelope here that tells you what's in it, and I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And do you want to introduce your family who's here?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce my family. Up here in the front is my grandmother, Lorraine, Mrs. Lorraine Jones. My grandfather, Mr. Ernest Jones. My aunt, Mrs. Javon Barber. My dad, Mr. Carl Galette. My brother, Josiah Galette. And my mother, Donna Galette.
Your grandmother is famous for her cooking. Many people don't know, but your grandmother is very famous for her cooking over at Ernie's for years and years. And she did a wonderful job in spite of everybody she had to work with. And so I'll say congratulations to you.
I would like to thank my parents. Words can't express how much I appreciate you guys and my family. I would like to thank the person who nominated me, Mrs. Barbara Johnson. Thank you so much for taking the time to recognize me and that you think that I'm capable enough to take on this award. So thank you so much. And I'd like to thank you guys, all of you guys up here. I don't remember everybody's names, but thank you so much. Thank you.
I'm going to give you a coin of excellence on the way out. Thank you much. And thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council folks, and our Chief, Louis Morris, for having this program. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, we'd also like to ask Ken Binion to come up from Community Development. We have a resolution here that would name April of 2014 Fair Housing Month. And we'd like, since the council's already signed, everybody's signed it, we thought we'd go ahead and pass it at this time and let Ken talk a little bit about that.
Okay, Councilmembers, we have a resolution authorizing the mayor to declare April 2014 marking the 46th anniversary of the signing of the National Fair Housing Act, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. The chair moves for approval. Second by Dr. showers discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, it carries. Mayor Battle?
Thank you. Ken?
Okay. In 1964, the Civil Rights Act passed. About four years later, after the assassination of Martin Luther King, the Fair Housing Act was passed. This basically says that you cannot discriminate in housing whether renting or selling based on color, religion, national origin, familiar status, disability, race. And so we just wanted to say, one, to bring awareness to the Fair Housing Act and show that the City of Huntsville is a fair housing place and we support the Fair Housing Act.
Thank you, Ken. And here is the resolution. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. If you'll stay there, we're going to need you up front. Next up is the recognition of the Aiden Under International All-Star Basketball Team in becoming district champions and finishing the top eight in the state of Alabama. I'd like to ask Coach Mike Manley to join us up front.
What a great looking group here.
Absolutely. It's a good bunch of boys.
Can you introduce your team for us?
I can do that. We'll just start here on the end. And Lawson, Pippins, would you come up and join us here? Lawson? Garner Farrell?
This is the Eight and Under Champions? This is the Eight and Under District Champions. We went to the state and won a game in the state tournament, ended up finishing in the top eight in the state. And you know, these guys really put in a lot of hard work to get where they were. So I'm proud of them.
Mayor and Councilmembers, I just want to recognize this team. I get to see these kids a lot. They're in Blossoming Jones Valley. Not only are they good basketball players and good athletes, they're also great students. We're counting on you to be the future leadership of Huntsville, so we want to make sure that you go back and be good citizens in your schools. And hopefully, one day, you'll be here as a mayor and the city council president and the city council people, because we need you. About 20 years, okay, guys? All right. Congratulations on a great season. If you would, if you'll start, Jax, if you'll start, go down to the end and shake hands and if guys, if y'all will follow them around. Thank you very much.
(Inaudible)
Congratulations. 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 Mr. President?
Hold one second. Do you want to talk about them? No, we're going to... Next up tonight, we have a very special presentation by a group, Karma and Dr. showers. If you'll please introduce them.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are delighted tonight to have a group that's in our city, been here all the week. They've visited two schools, Mountview and Rich Crest today. Most of us are familiar with an element in our schools today across this country. And it was obvious on yesterday, an incident that took place. And they have been going across the country, visiting schools to share that there's a better way in which to interact at these schools. And so they are going to come up. They have been very active this week in Huntsville. Bill Kling and I both had an opportunity to see their production presentation. Karma, the producing company, is Armit. And of course, Karma is a group, four young women, that are sweeping this country. And they're here in our city this week. And the whole purpose of them being in Huntsville is to say no to bullying and that we won't have happen in Huntsville what has happened in some of our other cities, certainly yesterday and some others. So I would ask the director, who is here, if she would come up and if she would just introduce the ladies and the production company.
Okay. Well, the girls' names are Karma. And of course, everybody knows what the word karma stands for. A lot of people have it mistaken for bad karma, but we try to teach that karma really means what goes around comes around. So whatever you put out, you're guaranteed to get back. What happened was, I came home, I'm actually an international recording artist. We're from the city of Memphis, Tennessee. I came home and my daughter was crying. We were watching a movie, and it was about bullying. My daughter's actually in the group. And she started crying. I asked her, what was she crying about? And it was this little guy in Philadelphia that we are planning on a trip to go see. He was in Philadelphia, and he was being bullied really bad. And every day, he got on the bus. They picked on him, they teased him. And his words were, these are my friends. And his mom said, friends don't hit you, friends don't hurt you. He said, well, Mom, everyone hits me and everyone hurts me. So are you saying that I have absolutely no friends? And that broke my daughter's heart. And so we decided to do something proactive, which is go city to city, state to state, school to school. These young ladies are 15 years old. We homeschool the girls. The girls all live with me now. They're straight A students. And they wanted to go and take their message around the country that bullying is wrong. These girls were actually bullied themselves in different ways, and that's how we actually decided. My daughter, who was in a private school, you would think that the setting was perfect for her, she actually told me, Mom, I was being bullied. I said, why didn't you tell me? She said, because you're my mom. That was a good enough answer for me, because Mama would have went to the school to try to handle it. Well, when she said that, I said, well, what could we do? So the girls came up with, we came up, we sat together, we made up a program called Anti-Bullying. And kids love music, so we decided to do it through music to get the message across. So we incorporated some really great songs, like Take Me For The Way I Am. You would not believe that these young ladies have 395,000 followers, and they got these followers on Instagram in three months. And these kids come on and say, I was bullied, and I didn't realize what it was. As simple as we would think, they would know what bullying is. A lot of the kids said they didn't even realize that they were actually bullying, as well as some of the kids were talking about hurting themselves or hurting others. They've come on Instagram and they've talked to the kids, because the girls actually talk to 200 to 500 kids every single night. They take the time out of their schedule to do it. We go to three schools a day, five days a week. We have our schedule, and we have an awesome team. These guys have taken off to come help the girls. So financially, me and my husband backed the project. And we've, in Huntsville, we have visited, if I'm not mistaken, how many schools? 15 to 20 schools in your area. And we have a lot, a lot of people here that love the girls now. And they got a chance to see the girls in action and got to see the response of the kids. We gear our program toward, we're mainly geared toward middle school, but we try to, we actually have three different programs for elementary, middle, as well as high. Of course, once they get to high school, they pretty much made up their minds, but you still can get a lot of them to change or waver a little bit. But the girls can now take it from here.
Well, hello, I'm Ariel.
I'm Kirsten.
I'm Journey.
And I'm Ish Michelle. And together we are. (Music) Karma. We're Karma. Thank you so much. So we go into schools and we talk to the kids about our situations and how we were bullied. And you usually start the program, so I'll let you tell yours first.
Well, normally, I'll say there's four different types of bullying. And the first one is verbal bullying. Verbal bullying is words that you say that makes one feel like they're nothing and aggravates them. And I was verbally bullied because of my size and the fact that I couldn't pronounce certain words right. It's where it was easy for others, it was hard for me. But I go on to Kirsten.
Then I get the mic and I say, well, mental bullying is basically bullying someone's mind, damaging them internally. Whatever you say or do to that person is repeatedly playing over and over in their mind. And I ask them, do they want to do that to people? And they say no. And I tell about my experience with bullying.
Go ahead and tell your experience.
Oh, well, my experience with bullying is that people bullied me because of my dancing skills, and I wasn't the best dancer, so.
And the third type of bullying is called cyberbullying. And I say cyberbullying is whenever you bully somebody over your phone, your computer, or any electronic device. And I also tell the kids that I also became a bully without realizing it. I was jealous of my sisters, so I would be mean to my friends and hurt their feelings. And I tell them that I changed my ways now.
And then we talk about the fourth type of bullying, which of course is a well-known one, which is physical bullying. Physical bullying is when you invade someone's personal space by kicking them, punching them, touching them, just anything to make them feel uncomfortable. And then I go on to tell my situation, how I became the bully in my situation, like Journey, without realizing it. My friends used to pick on me and tease me because of my height. I'm really short, I'm 4'8". And they'll nudge me on the head, and I wouldn't like it. So I use physical bullying as a way to express myself. And once I saw that I was hurting my friends, I didn't want to hurt them. So I decided to change my ways, and I'm a better person today. You want us to sing? And then I say, all I want to do is be accepted the way that I am. And then we'll sing The Way That I Am. You want to sing it? Okay. Can I get a clap? If you were falling, then I would catch you. I'd find a match, 'cause I love the way you say good morning. And you, you take me the way I am. If you are chilly here, take my sweater. Your head is aching, oh, I'll make it better, 'cause I love the way you call me baby. And you, you take me the way I am. I'll buy you a robe again, will you start losing all your hair, sew on patches? To all you, 'cause I love you more than I could ever promise. And you, you take me the way I am. Yes, you, you take me the way I am. Yes, you, you take me the way I am. Yeah. Thank you.
Just before you go down, young ladies, I would be remiss, Mayor, at the first presentation this week at Mountview, they've been all over the country. Mayors have given keys from all these other cities that they've visited. And of course, our mayor was out of town on city business, and we presented them a key to the city, so when they go to the next stop, they can tell all the world that they got a key from our mayor in Huntsville, Alabama. We got just a couple of, come on, Mayor. We have a couple more certificates. Bill Kling and I left some certificates earlier today, and we're going to let our mayor present these final certificates to this group. Mayor?
Thank you for your work in the community, and we want to appreciate it very much. We have, I'm not sure whose name goes with who, so if you will pass those out, we sure appreciate it. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My stock is going up.
Thank you. Thank you Karma.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. God bless y'all.
Bye-bye.
Tonight on our agenda, 4A3 has been deleted, 15Z has been deleted, and 15AA has been deleted. That's 4A3, 15Z, and 15AA. We have no business with outside legal representation. We do have public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing in order to hear and consider all objections or protests, if any, for removal of nuisance at 1512 McCary Street Northwest Huntsville, Alabama. This was set March 27, 2014, at the regular council meeting. Are there any objections? Hearing none, we'll go ahead with the resolution. The resolution is ordering abatement of nuisance at 1512 McCary Street Northwest Huntsville, Alabama. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Binion, could you come down and explain this, please?
Yes, this is a burnout structure that was at 1512 McCary Street. We showed pictures of this, and we can show the pictures again of the burnout structure. And basically, the house is total demolished there. There have been some, the debris, some of the debris has been moved, but we need the process to be completed. And so that's what we're asking for permission to do.
Thank you. All in favor, resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the demolition of an unsafe building constituting a public nuisance located at 2821 Union Drive Northwest. Mr. Binion?
This is a burnout also. It's been in this shape for several years. We are looking to have this demolished or burned by the fire department as one of their tests burns. And we're just looking, the neighborhood is in favor of us getting rid of this, of course, and we're looking for your approval to do the demolition on this.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this particular item? The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by the chair. Discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of demolishing the property located at 2207 13th Street Southwest. Mr. Binion?
Yes, this is a property which is identified in the resolution, was previously declared unsafe and authorized for demolition. The resolution authorizes for the assessment of the cost of demolition and removal of debris from the property listed. Attachment A identifies the owner, the date that community development took action, and the cost for demolition and removal of debris from the property. The total cost was $4,419.58. The owner received a written request for payment and failed to respond, so I'm requesting that an assessment be placed on this property to collect our costs. The owner was notified of this proposed action and may wish to speak.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the public wish to address counsel on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing to hear the appeal of Mr. Tommy Howell appealing the decision of the Liquor License Review Committee denying a retail liquor lounge entertainment license to Club Upscale LLC, doing business as Club Upscale, at 2021 Golf Road, Huntsville, Alabama, 35802, at the March 6, 2014 Liquor License Review Committee meeting. Does anyone from the public wish to address counsel on this particular issue? Ma'am, if you go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Linda Ferguson. I live at 2225 Golf Road. I am the president of the Homeowners Association of Sutton Place Condominiums. And I also have a letter from the property management of Park Place Apartments stating that she is not in favor of this deal going through. And there are a lot of concerns in our neighborhood. In the last five years, there's been three shootings, stabbings, and the road that it goes up is a dead-end street. They come out at 2:00 in the morning, 2:30. Radio's blaring out of their cars, racing three wide down the street. And we've had numerous problems. The police have been called numerous times. I've got bullet casings in my purse from the last shooting up there, which happened right after the Boston bombings. It sounded just like when they were going after that kid up there. And residents and their families are highly upset that they're going to get another liquor license. So I can speak for the whole homeowners association of 100 units up there. And Ms. Donna Stevens can speak for, she had a previous engagement, couldn't make it tonight, for her location on Golf Road. Now, I have two units I own, and both of mine are right at the parking lot. And I've had people come out throwing beer bottles, liquor bottles, I'm finding syringes, you name it. And it's just not, you know, it's a neighborhood up there. We're families. And the people that are coming up there now, and with the new gun laws, we are all very afraid we're not having a safe, happy neighborhood up there. afraid we're not having a safe, happy neighborhood up there. I don't know if you have any questions for me? I mean, I could tell you a book full of stuff.
Ms. Stamper, if you'll go pick up the letters from Ms. Ferguson.
Now, my son's unit is at the back half of the parking lot. Beer bottles are constantly being thrown across, hitting vehicles. This is the letter from the other unit. And this is it. And I'm just myself as president of the association. And I mean, the main cause is the people in the parking lot. The club itself has not been a problem. It's the clientele that come up there. And the police have been very helpful, but as far as the noise ordinance, the parking lot, and I have a three-year-old grandson that spends every weekend with me. They're out there with their doors all open in their cars, booming music, hooping and hollering, and the police say they can't do anything because it might cause a riot up there. They had a riot at one of the shopping centers, Ridge Street or somewhere, and they said they didn't want to have a riot. So there's not much control up there. And if, you know, the police won't watch people coming out or get them for noise ordinance with their cars, you know, it's just not safe up there. And right now, they don't have enough parking. The last incident we had, we had to call our towing company, and there were so many cars, they would not come up to even tow them. And we have it posted at every one of our entrances that cars that do not live here will be towed. And there was at least 50 cars in our lot, and our residents did not have places to park. And it's a very big concern.
Finished, Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to address counsel? The chair.
Petition help?
Ma'am?
A lot of signatures with a petition.
You're welcome to do whatever you like to do.
Okay, well, I didn't know if that would help.
Would anyone else like to address the counsel on this particular issue? The chair moves continue this until the next, till the first scheduled meeting in May, which is May 8.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. All those in favor continuing the hearing till the first regular meeting in May, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kling?
I know once a, a motion like that's made, you can't have debate, so I wanted to wait till the motion had passed. Can we go back and discuss, what was the city department's recommendation? Who approved, and what, what is the status of this recommendation? I guess that would go to.
Yeah, I think you, we all know. Dennis, would you like to come down, please, Mr. Culver?
They're appealing it to us, so that's why.
Yeah, I mean, it had to go through a.
Mr. Culver, could you give us the history of the process and tell us what's happened up to this point? Ma'am, Mr. Culver?
Well, when we take an application, we run it through different departments for them to look at and approve or deny on different aspects. The application was forwarded to the fire department. They put a seating or occupancy capacity on the building, and then it goes to a zoning department, and they determined that there is a sufficient parking based on that capacity. And it was denied by the zoning administrator, insufficient parking.
Mr. Kling, is that the information you need?
What about, I'm looking, I see blanks here, city clerk, police, planning. They didn't, there's nothing on this paperwork. And there's something about finance I can't understand. I'm just trying to see all the different city departments. You mentioned those two. They denied it, but there's nothing from the police or planning or city clerk.
The police, they're on the committee, so they, they vote on the committee, and I've got a copy of their denial on, on my, on my paperwork.
So both police and fire denied, or that's what I'm trying to underst, I don't understand who.
The fire department approved it.
Okay.
The police, the city clerk, and the planning department, which make up the committee, denied it based on the zoning administrator.
Okay.
Finance, they, they've approved it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Culver. Now our public hearings be set. We have a resolution set a public hearing on an ordinance zoning newly annexed property lying on the west side of Nick Fitchard Road and west of Research Park Boulevard to Neighborhood Business C1 District. This will be set for the May 22, 2014, regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Culver, discussion. All those in favor setting the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Two is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance zoning newly annexed property lying on the west side of Christopher Drive and north of US Highway 72 West, the Residence 2A District. This will be set for the May 22, 2014, regular council meeting.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion, Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling, discussion. All those in favor setting the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Three is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance zoning newly annexed property lying on the north side of US Highway 72 West and east of Jeff Road to Highway Business C4 District. This will be set for the May 22, 2014, regular council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Culver, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Four is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance zoning newly annexed property lying west of US Highway 431 South and on the north side of Plainview Drive to Residence 1A District. This will be set for the May 22, 2014, regular council meeting.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Ms. Kling, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at communications from the public. When I call your name, you have three minutes to address the counsel. Please give your name and address when you come to the microphone. Ms. Ferguson, would you like to speak again? Yes, this, you already spoke on, was postponed. Ms. Reed?
Good evening.
Good evening. Ms. Reed, if you'll give your name and address, please.
Oh, my name, my name is Jackie Reed. 303 Jack Coleman Drive, today. I'll be moving pretty soon, though, and I'll have a new address in a few days. I, I want to thank you for the public input. So happy to see all the young people involved in our city. I want to wish everyone a blessed and happy Easter, as we won't be here for the Easter. I have the mayor a Easter present. I'm sorry. And I'll be giving him, when I get through speaking, I'll send it to you. It's a chicken. It jumps around. It's a chicken. And I want to give that, you that for Easter, Mayor. As the chicken ordinance has gone away completely, the, in this month, we have that livestock ordinance still hanging out here about the farmer's market. I believe you should drop all that urban ag culture stuff. And these people wants the farmer's market, let them go to zoning and the variance board, send out their letters like they should. We, we've been on this for six to eight months. I think it's time to let it die and let it go. I think we need to send a message out there. Take your chicken home, maybe that'll help you to get over it. Anyway. I, I also want to say that Jefferson and Clinton, the property of $100 per year for 50 years, did we ever know what our property, this taxpayer owns that property? Did we ever know what that property appraises for over there on that area? Some people tell me you never answer any of my questions. Sometimes, answer some of them sometime. Anyway, what is the city paying, and what are we gonna do, if anything, for this development? What is our part, and what's the cost for this development? Sometime you can answer it, but I'll hurry and get through, so you won't be fussing on me. I'm happy to see you working on the creek over here. I wish you'd cut the grass while you're over there. I've been trying to find out for 20 years who owns that and why the grass was never cut, but while they're working on that project on Holmes Avenue over here, I hope that's not part of a riverwalk that we've been talking about coming into the city. I'm so happy to see, see the city looking at all the development in the city. Hotels, Holiday Inn, hotels downtown, two, three hotels. And I understand the hotel people, when we were running for mayor, was begging, begging us not to keep building hotels, because they weren't full to capacity. I know you've got three or four lined up right now. If you have all these agreements out here, I'd like to have a copy of each and every one of them. And if you can, hold 15R U and B tonight. I appreciate an netting me con, and I'm looking at us giving the 4% pay raise to the city employees this year. That's what Athens did. I hope you remember that when time comes to do the budget. Thank you. How am I gonna get this chicken to the mayor?
Ms. Stamper will come get it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Mr. Dwight Wright?
Thank you. Dwight Wright, 2005 Kildare Street, and I have a packet of information I'd like to give to all the council members.
Ms. Stamper, if you'll get those packets, please.
I'm addressing you tonight, hopeful that we can identify a solution to ensure the survival of the historic McCormick House. This house is also known as Kildare, the O'Shaughnessy House, or simply that castle that towers over Oakwood Avenue. Kildare is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and according to Bob Gamble, chief architectural historian for the Alabama Historical Commission, it is the most important Victorian mansion remaining in Alabama. I purchased this property in 2007 with the dream of restoring this asset of the city. Unfortunately, this dream has become a nightmare. The property has become the target of constant harassment and trespassing. Over 150 police reports have been filed. The acts of harassment include excessive horn blowing, obscenity shouted, threats made against our lives, violent sexual threats, rocks thrown at the house and at us, and packs of people running through the yard. People have even climbed over the five-foot temporary wire fence. While these acts are targeted at the McCormick House and its residents, they have most assuredly had a major impact on the quality of life of everyone in the area. Since 2009, I've been working with the city to identify ways to secure and protect this property so that restoration can continue. My largest obstacle is the right-of-way in front of the house that cuts through my yard at a diagonal and grows to 30 feet from the road. Due to the unusual shape, shape and the probability that a Section 106 review would prohibit any further development, this area seems unusable. I have filed two requests to vacate a portion of the right-of-way. Both requests were approved by Huntsville Utilities but denied by other entities within the city. Since my requests were made, the council has approved 13 other requests to vacate right-of-way. My questions for you are, what criteria are used to determine when these requests are granted, and how are these other 13 cases different from mine? Why is maintaining control over this unusable piece of land more important than saving an important piece of our history and ensuring the quiet enjoyment of their property for all the residents in the area? And why, even when the city was offered much more valuable, usable property in exchange, were these requests still denied? Also, in July, this council approved a license agreement granting me permission to build a fence in the right-of-way. The license agreement, placed on the agenda by the city attorney, includes absolutely no restrictive or descriptive language concerning the fence. Before construction of the fence began, I contacted every city department I thought would have jurisdiction over fences to see if my design was acceptable. The design violates no city ordinances on fences. It was only after I had been granted a license with no restrictions that I made the sizable investment to build the fence to protect my property, its residents, and the neighbors. I have invested over $15,000 in the fence, an investment made with your approval and no restrictions. It does not seem fair or just to me that the city is now threatening to revoke the license for this fence. And I have one final question tonight. What were you doing at 2:00 AM Sunday morning? Instead of being asleep in bed, my neighbor and I were standing on the side of Kildare Street with the police. May I have one more minute?
Councilor, is that okay? You have one more minute?
A vehicle with five juveniles had parked in front of my nearly blind, 84-year-old neighbor's house. Two males got out and approached my property and began yelling loudly obscenities and challenges at us. We now not only live under the threat of harassment from strangers, but also under the threat that, that the city will take away the only protection we have. No one should have to live under these circumstances, not me nor my neighbors. I have done everything I can think of to secure this property and address these problems. I truly believe in the importance of historic preservation. However, I have reached my limit. If we cannot find a way to keep the currently designed fence in the location you approved last year, again with no restrictions, I will be a force to abandon this project, and the McCormick House will be torn down. The fence is temporary. The loss of this great treasure will be forever. The packet that I just gave you tonight has a petition signed by 49 of the residents surrounding this property. They are in favor of the fence at its current location and its, at its current height, current design. Some of them are here tonight to show their support, and I would like to ask if they stand now to make that known. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling?
I can tell you something. I talked to the gentleman, and I've been out to look at the neighborhood, and perhaps I've had some similarities in some of the issues with Merrimack and Low Mill, which are fighting for historic preservation and improvements. One of the issues, I think is, I think the gentleman had addressed it, but just want to make it clarified, was that there was another gentleman who had it, who had concerns about access to the water meters. But I think, when I understand, the design of this had been done in a way where the other gentleman would have access to the water meters. And I would say that, based upon what I've seen and heard, that, you know, I think there's merit. Nobody had told him beforehand, your fence can only be so high, and, you know, it's a big fence, all right, but it, it would fit in, you know, when the final thing is done, it would fit in with, with the house and the neighborhood. And I think the neighborhood has shown that they support, you know, keeping the facility there. So I would, with the provision that the water meter be, access be available for the other, other property owner, support what this gentleman's saying.
May I respond to his comments?
Ms. Kling, would you like to hear his response? Ms. Wright, go ahead, but please keep it brief.
Okay. And I appreciate that. I would like to just say, please keep in mind that the fence is not complete. I know that during the initial stage of construction, people were very concerned because it looked horrible, and it did. It was just in the beginning. It will be an attractive fence. I think it's a fence that everyone would like. And I'd also like to point out that there has been a lot of conversation about the water meters. And the neighboring property's water meters are actually in the right-of-way in front of my property. But I did offer to pay to have those moved before construction of the fence was begun. I tried to work that out so that there would be no problems, absolutely no problems. And I had agreed with Huntsville Utilities that I would pay the cost to move those meters so that there would no be no issues, but the neighbor refused to let that happen.
Mr. James Ray? Sir, if you'll go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is James Ray. I live at 2002B Virginia Boulevard, right behind the McCormick House.
Welcome.
I've, I've lived at that residence for over 20 years. And I've known Delilah, I've known the previous owners as well, but I've known Delilah and Dwayne ever since they started there. I don't think I've ever seen two people work as hard as they have to improve the property. I've taken a look at the fence, and, and I'm retired now, but when I was working, I did a lot of maintenance and repair. And I'm saying that the construction of that fence is superb. And I, and I'm sure that it, once it's capped, and once it's done, it'll absolutely be an improvement to the neighborhood. And then I'll, I'll be proud to be part of that, and I'm proud to be their neighbor. And I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Amanda Hodges?
I'm Amanda Hodges. My current address is 113 Burrell Avenue. I used to live directly across the street from the Kildare Mansion at 2006 Kildare. Two years ago, I had no choice, but I had to move my children out of the neighborhood for their safety. I have three young children. We moved from the north precinct to the south precinct. We all wanted to protect our neighborhood, and this went on for years. These problems weren't just with one person, it concerned all of us, our entire neighborhood. When we moved, my twins were eight, and my youngest was five. My daughters were not able to play out in my yard because people were so concerned about looking at the Kildare Mansion. They would drive through my yard, they wouldn't look, and at times, my children were out there. They would park in my yard just to scream vulgar obscenities at a house. At one point, my four-year-old at the time, they would park next to her window, came out and asked me what the word for kitty cat was. There was a group of boys out in my yard, parked, screaming that at the mansion. I ran out them, out there. I asked them all to leave. They were on my yard. They refused to leave, and they kept yelling everything. There was, we have all been harassed to no end, and this has gone on for a long time. I lived there for three years. I was told by a police officer one time in the middle of the afternoon, after I had to take my children inside, that I should disassociate myself from the homeowner, homeowners, and that would make a difference. That wasn't the problem. Our whole neighborhood became friends. We all shared meals together, we had holidays together, we were all one big family, we all helped each other in our time of need. And for anybody who did not live on Kildare Street or does not live on Kildare Street, you cannot comprehend what we all went through. There were so many hours and hours of counts of nights that we lost sleep for the constant harassment, horn blowing, and screaming. And these actions weren't just done by teenagers, there was adults, too. One night, when the police did catch a vehicle of teenage girls that were harassing us that kept driving around the block, one of their mothers was driving them around, and she was involved just as much as the teenagers were. People have done donuts in the yards, yelled, screamed, threw rocks at us, throwed half-full bottles of Gatorades at us for moving cars, threatened our lives when we were just standing out in the open in both yards. When we were threatened... When we were threatened, we were not saying anything to them except, "What do you want?" These problems have gone on for over four years, and at times, I felt like our little neighborhood was put in a very isolated incident, which very young children unfortunately had to be involved. There were people who would park down the street, park in my yard, who would, in the middle of the night, wear dark clothing, walk up to our houses, and we truly had no intention, no idea of what their intentions were.
Ma'am, do you need more time?
Yes, if I may, please.
Okay, one more minute. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Everybody wants peace in their homes. That's what I wanted. That's what everybody wants. I never achieved that peace in my home on Kildare Street. I absolutely love that house. I miss my neighborhood terribly. I finally have peace now because I've had to move. I think it's very important to put the fence up so my daughters and I can go back and visit and know that we are safe in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Dee Johnson?
Hi, I'm Dee Johnson. I live at 2108 Kildare Street, and I would just like to voice my concern of the instances that happened on our street. I was a member of our community watch, and we would have to patrol at night. I have grandchildren, and I will be, and I still am concerned over people that will stop in the middle of the street. And if you turn off of Oakwood onto Kildare, there's a slight hill. People stop. You have to stop because they're stopped. Then you're concerned that somebody else may turn on the road and hit you because you're stopped in the street. And then, when we were in community watch, if they would see the community watch car come down, they would start speeding down the street, and we have children that live on that street. And you can go practically any time during the day and see that people are constantly speeding down the street and stuff. And we do have a lot of people that are just continuous, just riding around the circle. And I think that with having the fence up would just deter people from coming and gawking and making advances and stuff. Because I have been at Delilah's house. I've seen the rocks that have been thrown, and I think for their protection and the protection of the rest of the community, I think the fence being put up would be best. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy Parker?
I'm Peggy Parker. Live at 2307 Kildare Street. I've watched the going on in front of the Kildare House. And this is Delilah's home. This is where she lives. She's doing the same thing that you and I would do. She's trying to protect her home. She's trying to put on some kind of a security. When you turn off Oakwood, you go on to Kildare, a lot of times, you can't turn because of the cars backed up, looking at the house, shining their lights into the house. This is a great home in Huntsville. It is a historical site, but it's also someone's home that they live in. They deserve the privacy. And if it takes a huge fence to do that, that should be done. We all have the right to our privacy in our homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Gregory Johnson?
Hello. My name is Gregory Johnson. I live at 2108 Kildare Street. I have lived on Kildare since 1975. I've been a, I'm a lifelong resident of Huntsville. And was, my family lived on Mountain View, which intersects with Kildare about halfway up. Kildare goes across Mountain View. That's where I was, my family was living at when I was born, and I've been familiar with this house all of my life. And in the last 30 years, this is the only people that's took an interest in saving this house. I didn't, I think it'd be a shame to, this house had to be tore down on account of punks and morons riding up down the road just because they know it harasses these people, who all they're trying to do is preserve a house that's on a national historical register. And I'm just, I'm tired of it, and I hope y'all do the right thing and vote and let them put that fence up. I don't think either, none of y'all up there would put up with somebody coming into your yard and coming up to your door and beating on your door in the middle of the night, hollering obscenities and doing all that. It's just, if that fence don't go up, then you need to assign the police department, two or three men, to be on patrol on it all the time. Because it's got out where it's just, it's been on YouTube, and it's just a thing for kids to do now. And it's not just kids, it's parents that gets out with their kids. And they're trying to do what's right in preserving this house. And as a lifelong resident of this city, I want this house preserved. And I pray that y'all do the right thing, make the right decision, and allow them to put this fence up. It is their right to put it up. It is their right for privacy. And I'm in favor of the fence, and I'm in favor of saving this house. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Joffrey Allen, could you please update us on this issue?
Yes, I do want to correct a few things. I won't go into whatever conversations may have been held between Mr. Wright and members of the engineering department regarding the specifications for the sign, except to say that the engineering department never had any idea that the fence would be 12 to 15 feet tall. They never would have approved it, knowing that. And Shane Davis and Kathy Martin are here and can respond to that if necessary. I think there's a misunderstanding about whether or not a fence is allowed, period. The owner of the property can erect a fence on his property at any time he desires to do so. And it can be of the same dimensions and size of the fence that has been erected in the city's right-of-way. The issue here is that the city has granted a privilege to erect a fence within the right-of-way. It's not a right. He doesn't have a right to erect a fence within the right-of-way. The city granted that privilege. And the dimensions of the fence greatly exceed anything that was contemplated or anticipated by the city and in the opinion of the city engineer constitutes a hazard, a traffic hazard for the general public. So the, excuse me, so the issue is not whether he can erect a fence. He can have the same fence on his property line if he wanted to and could have done that years ago. It's an issue of what's allowed within the right-of-way, what the city is willing to accept within the right-of-way.
Thank you, sir. Vince, I'm sorry about this name, Minjioni. Sir, if you go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Vince Minjioni. I live at 3049 Box Canyon Road in Huntsville.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, we were just trying to get the council to help us approve to get our beer and wine licenses moved up before the date of trying to open the downtown Publix. We're trying to get that open next month on the 7th.
Yeah, yes, sir. We have it on our agenda. It's 15 double C, and we get to that, we'll take it up. Thank you. I'm glad you're here. Appreciate it. Mr. Troy Lane?
Obviously, I'm not Mr. Lane. He had to leave to get to work, but he left a statement in his absence. May I?
You give it to Ms. Stamper, please. Thank you. And I can't read the writing very good. I believe it's Denise Bissett or Bissell? Is there, looks like D E N C I or C E? Anybody sign up, number 11? Okay. That ends our communications from the public. We have no Huntsville utility items. We do have board appointments to be voted on. 981 is a resolution to reappoint Allen Bid to the Madison County Communications District Board, and Hans 911 Board for a term to expire April 30th, 2017. Is there a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Dr. Shower, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. 2 is a resolution to appoint Michelle Watkins to the Community Development Citizens Devote Council for a term to expire April 14th, 2017.
Motion approved.
Motion by Dr. Shower, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. I have a nomination to the Madison County 310 Board. Ms. Tammy Rex has resigned as of January 2014, and I'm nominating Ms. Marlena Primo to take her place. Her term will expire on April 1st, 2017. Are there other nominations?
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling?
I, I'm always glad to nominate good people. I'd like to nominate Debbie Reed Batson for reappointment to the Railroad Authority.
Thank you. Are there other nominations? Moving on, we're at 10. Approval expenditures. 10 A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Mr. Kling?
Mr. President, I move for payment of vouchers in the amount of $5,640, excuse me, $5,674,961.10.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Mr. Kling, do you have a finance committee report?
Well, Mr. President, I have talked with Councilman Culver, who serves on the Finance Committee with me, and also with Mr. Taylor, our Finance Director. Mr. Taylor is ready to bring information to the council for mid-year budget review. And I'd like to ask if we could, instead of having a separate work session-type meeting, we could give Mr. Taylor 15 minutes at the next regular council meeting to give a brief overview. In that way, because it's on television, it would reach more people.
Sure, that'll be fine. It'll be May 8th, and we'll put it on the agenda at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mayor Battle?
Thank you, Ms. President. For the record, I'd like to make the following appointments. Joey Lo, A I E L L O, to the Air Pollution Control Board for a five-year term to begin April 11th, 2014, to expire April 11th, 2019. Dr. Yong Wang, Y O N G W A N G, to the Air Pollution Control Board for a five-year term to begin April 11th, 2014, expire April 11th, 2019. Mr., and we have a position on the Historic Huntsville Preservation Commission. The Five Points Community gave us three excellent nominations for that. And we want to announce the appointment of Mr. Mike Holbrook to fill the position of Judy Persick on the Historic Huntsville Preservation Commission. Also, this weekend, Operation Green Team wants to invite everybody to Earth Day Celebration at Hayes Nature Preserve this Saturday from 10 to 2. Our community partner in this is Boeing, and Boeing has supported this for years. If you want to come out early at 8:00 AM, you can go birdwatching with John Ahinger. You might even spot a chicken out there, Ms. Reed. You never know when those fowl, fowls will get out there. And we also, there are going to be more than 70 exhibits with activities for children, and there'll be a mass butterfly release at noon sponsored by the Alabama Cooperative Extension System. And there will also be children visiting Barrett on the Mountains display during the festival, and they'll receive a pass to come to Barrett to enjoy the treasure hunt on Gold Mountain. This is an annual tradition that, Joey, thank you very much for all the efforts that you and Green Team do with this and all the city departments do, because it is a big festival, and it's a great way to start spring. If you're like me and you have allergies, go ahead and take your Benadryl before you go so that you'll be ready for this. But it's a great event, and we like to invite everybody out. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask if we could get Dennis Mattson to come up to the mic, Planning Director. Mr. President, while he's coming up, if I could, I'd like to make one change on the finance. You know, we talked finance about the mid-year review. I believe that what Mr. Taylor had wanted to do was at the next regular meeting instead of May 8th. Would that be okay?
Sure, that'll be fine.
Okay, so we'll just go with the next regular council meeting then? Okay. Dennis, I know you've been working on a lot of projects, and of course, I've had some interest. Can you, you've been able to go out, I believe, with BJ Robinson and also Michelle McMullin from two different neighborhoods over in West Huntsville. Have you got any concepts, ideas, or anything that you can share with us as far as how West Huntsville might benefit from this comprehensive plan process?
Sure. I wouldn't say that we've got anything really concretely developed or anything like that.
Just very general concept.
Obviously, still very much in the planning phase. I think when I mentioned, actually, when I first got hired, I said I was going to spend a lot of time early on doing a lot of listening. That's really where we are in this comp planning phase, is doing a lot of our homework, especially within the planning department. A lot of that is going out and talking to community organizations. I've been in front of organizations, probably in every corner of the city thus far, and have a lot still to schedule. But that neighborhood in particular has been pretty good in their outreach to the planning department. We've done a couple of tours, as you mentioned, with Michelle McMullin and BJ Robinson. It's certainly an area, I think many neighborhoods have challenges with how they're growing or, in some cases, how they're not growing. In that case, we talked a lot about, I think, the corridors are a challenge. I think the Patton Road and Tryana Corridors, some of the blight, I think, is really the only way to put it on Patton Road, and what are some of our strategies for mitigating that. Tryana, I think, actually has a lot of possibilities. It could probably actually do with a road diet. By that, I mean actually doing a better job controlling traffic speeds and traffic flow along there and making for a better pedestrian environment. Governors as well, I think, actually probably has a lot of potential for redevelopment. And I think in our actions and the way we help along on those corridors, we can actually do a lot for the interior residents. But we're still spending a lot of time looking at that and really looking at neighborhoods all over the city. But we've definitely been digging in a lot there.
Thank you. I know that there are some other areas and some big projects and things that you've been working on, but I just want to wave a flag. I think you've kind of assured that you have been looking at that.
Sure, absolutely. We've actually discussed this in the past, and we thought that as we start getting into the comprehensive planning process, it would probably make sense for us to do a semi-regular work session with the council to keep you abreast. When we really get out of the homework phase and start getting into the planning phase, leave that obviously up to y'all's discretion, but it might be good, a good way to kind of keep you all up to date at the same, at one time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate it. Mr. President, I guess another issue, and I think it's kind of been in the paper. We've heard from the residents in the Mayfair neighborhood about the traffic flow issue. There was a court case that they were involved in that went to Circuit Court. The neighborhood prevailed, and then it was appealed to the appellate court. And while that was taking place, the, I guess, enforcement of the judge's order was kind of placed on hold. This past week, the three-member State Appellate Court came out and ruled to, for the neighborhood and to uphold the Circuit Judge's order. And at this point, there has been no appeal. Mr. Joffrey Allen has feelings that there would be an appeal that would take place to the State Supreme Court. But I guess I'd like to ask if, at least since there's been a history, four judges from two courts have ruled in support of the neighborhood on this, that if we could go ahead and provide enforcement to the neighborhoods, you know, based upon what the judge had ruled, pending if there's a prevention order from the State Supreme Court that would overrule us. But at this point, I think the precedent is Circuit Judge ruled in favor of enforcement. The State Appellate Judge, again, all three members ruled in favor of enforcement. And I would like to ask, you know, if we could move forward with enforcement. We don't know for sure. There's a probability, not 100%, but Mr. Joffrey Allen feels strongly that there will be an appeal. But until somebody tells us, Huntsville, you cannot enforce what these two courts have already ruled on, I'd like to ask if we would, you know, go ahead and give the city departments the go-ahead to provide the enforcement as ordered by the judge.
Ms. Joffrey Allen, could you please advise the council on this?
Yes, let me, you do have a couple of options, but I think you need to be aware of what the risks are in exercising those options. The, Mr. Kling is right. The Court of Civil Appeals did come back and rule in favor of the, basically, the neighborhood and against Ann School of Dance. If the city were to move forward with enforcement, I would ask that the council authorize the administration to do that by resolution. As you know, no individual member of the council can direct that, and really, it's for your own protection that you act as a body to do that. Now, I have been notified by the attorney for Ann School of Dance that he is going to first ask for a rehearing before the Court of Civil Appeals, and if that's not successful, then he'll move on. then he'll move on to the Supreme Court. There, if, you know, there's no, no guarantee that the Supreme Court would uphold the decision of the appellate courts. You might think it's reasonable that they, that they would, they might. Um, if they do not, and if by enforcing this pending their appeal, uh, the enforcement causes, uh, adverse economic consequences to Ann School of Dance, and the Supreme Court later comes back and reverses the decision of the Court of Civil Appeals, then th- there would undoubtedly be some sort of legal action against the city for that, for that enforcement. And, and the risks of Ann's being successful are certainly heightened, uh, if we have, if we have, uh, contributed to, to some demise on her part, as far as her business. Um, it, it is your call, I just wanted you to be aware of the risks, that if the Supreme Court does reverse the decision, that there might be adverse consequences for the city. I certainly understand the neighborhood's frustration with the parking issues, uh, don't mean to diminish those at all. Uh, we will definitely know within the next week or so whether or not a motion for reconsideration will be filed. Uh, as you know, appeals of this nature take many months, so it, it could be six months to a year before it's finally resolved, and you may be willing to take the risk of enforcement, given the concerns of the neighborhood.
Mr. President.
Ms. Kling.
I understand what Mr. Joffreyon's talking about, certainly we, we want to, you know, be reasonable on these things, uh, but when we're talking about the rights, let's don't forget the rights of the neighborhood, and we've heard from them on numerous occasion. They have been to the Planning Commission, there's a long history, uh, of telephone calls, emails that I've had back and forth with, with residents of the neighborhood. And it seems like, you know, we've got two conflicts. One is the rights of the, um, owner of, of the dance studio, then we got the rights of the residents of the area. And, uh, I don't think we would be irresponsible in that we are basically following the guidelines, not ignoring the guidelines, but following the guidelines that were set up by the Circuit Court here in Madison County, and also by the State Appellate Court. Uh, I would be glad to put a resolution together or a motion, um, saying that we would go ahead with enforcement pending any, uh, action. But as I understand it, Mr. Joffreyon, please correct me, just because something is appealed to, let's say, the Supreme Court, that doesn't necessarily mean that, that everything has to stop. There's not, uh, unless the, the Supreme Court comes out with an order to the City of Huntsville to cease enforcement, uh, we, we are still within our responsibility to provide enforcement for the neighborhood, aren't we?
Uh, yeah, basically, that's correct. Uh, the order would not be from the Supreme Court. The, any kind of order to stop the city from enforcement would, would come from the trial court. But yes, unless there's, uh, an order from, from a court, then it would, would not prohibit the city from enforcing the, the order.
Well, I guess, uh, just to put something on the table, I'd like to make a motion, I'm writing it out, I move that the City of Huntsville move forward with enforcement of the Circuit Court and State Appellate Court's orders concerning Mayfair Neighborhood versus Ann Studio of Dance.
Mr. Kling has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion.
Uh, Mr. President, as part of that, the understanding can be that, uh, if the, um, State Supreme Court comes back and says, uh, Huntsville, we want you to hold off until we've heard the case, uh, certainly I would understand that, that we're not just trying to go blindly, but pending any direct, uh, order from a higher court, uh, I would say that we should support the, uh, the two-court decisions that have already come out.
And, and Ms. Kling, uh, my position on this is, is we probably should wait till the next meeting. Um, I'm a little bit, uh, wary of the advice we've just gotten from Council then, uh, making, uh, an important resolution like this on, on, on basically a piece of paper in the meeting, so, uh, I probably will be for it, but I, I, I need some more time, but the Council obviously is, is able to act anytime they want to, but that's just my thinking, is we need some more thought put into, to that motion. Ms. Roshevsky.
I, I, I would agree with the President on that as well. I, I, you know, I would like to have sidebar, talk about with, with, uh, Peter. I'd be interested in hearing what the mayor has to say about it. I mean, I'd like to talk to, I mean, the whole gamut, just, you know, I'm not saying run from it. I actually kind of support what, what, uh, Councilman Kling's saying, but, you know, I had not endeavored to make this kind of decision tonight with worries about later on, and later on, and later on. I'd like to have a little bit of time to think about it.
Uh, just for the sake of discussion, Mr. Joffreyon, uh, does the neighborhood have any legal rights to sue us for non-compliance with, uh, court orders that have been issued?
Uh, no, sir, we're not a party to that litigation, so it, they don't have any...
Since there's been an order issued by the judge that's been upheld, aren't we bound, or are we gonna be seen as being, um, derelict in our duty by not doing what the judge had ordered us to do, especially after it's been upheld?
Uh, Mr. Kling, the judge hasn't ordered the city to do anything. Uh, the judge has ordered, uh, Ann School of Dance to do something. Uh, it, the order would just allow us to, uh, w- we would be involved in the enforcement of it, but it doesn't, that, we were not a party to the litigation, so the order, the judge's order is not applicable directly to the City of Huntsville.
But we are not, I understand we're not a party, we're not, uh, one of the two parties of which portion, I guess, but we're not responsible for enforcement of, of this order after it carried out, it came out?
Mr. Kling, we're, we're not going to be responsible to the neighborhoods for any kind of, um, civil action. Do we have, I mean, does the city, city government have, uh, um, an obli- a moral obligation to, uh, to support its residents? Yes. Do we have, uh, um, I mean, do we, do we enforce our, our code of ordinances? Yes. But the judge's order is not actionable against the City of Huntsville.
City has...
It, it really would be wise, I mean, we have waited many, many months, uh, for this litigation. It really would be wise to give it another two weeks and let us fully vet this, uh, with each other before the Council makes the decision. It, there seems to be a level of discomfort among some Council members, and another two weeks really wouldn't hurt much.
Well, there seems to be a lot of discomfort for me, 'cause I think there's been a lot of foot-dragging on this issue, and I don't want to, um, you know, I wanna keep this on an issue basis, but, uh, this has gone on for a long time. It's been, they've been through the process, they've been to the Council. Uh, we've had neighborhoods within my district, other, other districts, they've come to the Council, there's been a problem, and I think we all try to roll up our sleeves and work on these things, but, uh, this just seems to be like, no matter what gets done, we have, uh, there's always a problem. There are traffic signs that were put up, and there's a problem with the Police Department in enforcing those no-left-turn, uh, traffic signs, and they were up there, placed up there by the City Department of Transportation. Uh, you know, I just think this neighborhood, after all this history, deserves the same respect that we give to other neighborhoods, and it's not a, you know, it's not trying to say one neighborhood's better than the other, we try to do the best we can for all neighborhoods in the city. And I guess I'm just, I'm just kind of fed up, I just feel like there's not, uh, any fair treatment that's going on. I hear from people in that neighborhood every week, and I think we've had a history, emails that go back on this issue, people in that neighborhood that have been up here, uh, probably at least three, possibly even four years that this has been going on, perhaps even longer. And, you know, we're just trying to do what we can, and we've been through the process. Uh, we're the ones that kind of advise them, well, this is the way it would work, and, you know, they, they went through the legal process, you know, went to a Circuit Court, and it's just, you know, frustrating. A decision came out, and I know some eyebrows were probably raised about that. Uh, then it went, it was appealed, and it seems like there's a pattern that, uh, you know, the courts are, are ruling in favor of the neighborhood, and given the fact that the State Appellate Court has upheld this, I don't think we are being irresponsible in enforcing what is on the books. And yes, if the State Supreme Court comes back, the State Supreme Court comes back with a, uh, a stay that says, do not enforce this, we wanna wait until we hear the case, I certainly understand, that's the legal process, and, and we would follow that, but, uh, until that has happened, uh, it seems like the city should be an advocate to, uh, do what we can for the neighborhoods, especially when there are already two, um, two decisions that have gone in favor of the neighborhood. I mean, guys, we're, you know, Mark, you have issues in your neighborhoods, and I'm there to, you know, try to do what I can, and, you know, John, you two, I know there's one we disagreed on, but that was similar to what I, way I voted, you know, when Ms. Moon was here. But I'm just saying...
I, I don't, I don't disagree with you on what you're saying, but what are, what are we not doing? I mean, you just made a comment about the left turn. If they're making a left turn with a traffic sign that's not, that's telling you you're not supposed to make a left turn, this ordinance, this, what's happening here doesn't have anything to do with that. We should be taking care of business on that as it is.
What's going on there?
So, I mean, you used that example, okay, I'm, I'm cool with that, but, uh, this is, uh, we have our, our, our lawyer that says to just be careful for a little bit here, and we're saying two more weeks to be careful. You're, you're handwriting out a, a, at a resolution that, um, that we, we spend weeks, a week or two a week to work a resolution so we do it right, and you're, you're, and, and we're not saying we're against it, we just would like to sit back for a couple weeks and, uh, talk about it for the next one.
Yeah, and, Mr. Kling, my question is, since you called us out individually, is why weren't the resolutions prepared so we could study it? If the resolution had been prepared, we could have seeked legal counsel before the meeting, you might have a better chance of passing it, but I think your, the mannerism tonight is, is what's causing the problem you're complaining about, and that was of no control of the Council.
Well, the, um, uh, the requirement or being told I needed a resive- resolution came from Mr. Joffreyon, uh, I would say within an hour of when this meeting started. I guess I could figure out on my cellphone what I called Mr. Joffreyon, and he had told me that. Uh, I emailed him this morning, and, uh, that was the response I'd got. Uh, you know, I'm trying to do the best I can, and it's like...
And we're not arguing that, but you're calling us out for not acting, and I'm just, I'm just pointing out that it, it would have been, the agenda was formed Tuesday, it would have been perfectly fine to put the, put a resolution on the agenda Tuesday, so we could have studied it like our normal process. We're just asking for a little time, because our, our Council has advised us, advised us to, and, uh, we think, I think it's wise to do that, but maybe the other Councilmen don't agree. Mr. Culver.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. And Councilman Kling, while I certainly share your pain and have committed to you in terms of doing what I can to help you, um, in, in your district, I, I, I do wanna say that, um, I, I think it could be good if we measure ten times and cut once. Um, Mr. Joffreyon, I'm concerned about the case law, perhaps, that were used, uh, in this case. If there were to be a case on point, I'd like to have an opportunity maybe to, to, uh, look at some of those cases, both on the plaintiff as well as the defendant, um, um, I mean, I'm sorry, the plaintiff and the, uh, you know what I'm talking about.
Both parts.
Yes, both, both parties. I'm getting it mixed up with the criminal now, the civil, um, to see what it is that we can do, and I believe that we will be able to, to help them probably. Okay? Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President. Dr. Showers.
I'm gonna call for the debate, uh, the question. All of you know, our call for the question is to end the debate, and, um, um, the law allows me to do that.
Dr. Showers called for a question. Is there a second to the question motion?
Second.
You'll second it? We have, we have, uh, called for the question, but Dr. Showers, second amendment, Mr. Culver, all those in favor of, of calling, I mean, approving the question and then ending debate, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I have Dr. Showers voting aye. Does anyone else vote aye? The debate continues.
Now, Mr. President, just for the record, a couple of weeks ago, or I think it was last, I think it was last week, I'll even find on the email, I had sent an email to both Mr. Joffreyon and, and Tommy Brown, you know, basically saying, I found out about the court case, uh, ruling in favor of the neighborhood, you know, I'd like to see enforcement start, and, uh, I think I actually have something from Mr. Joffreyon to the extent, yes, sir, we will, or yes, sir, or something to that extent. Um, a resident of the neighborhood, uh, had a copy, got a copy of the court, um, decision, the twenty-six-page decision, and I forwarded that to, uh, Mr. Joffreyon and Mr. Brown. Uh, then today, I sent an email to Mr. Joffreyon just asking, okay, when's the enforcement going to, going, when's the enforcement gonna start? And then, this morning, I was told, I guess very similar to what Mr. Joffreyon had said, that she has, you know, she has the right to appeal. And, uh, it is unlikely, let me read this, make sure I'm doing this right, if an appeal is taken, it is likely the enforcement will be stayed pending the outcome of that appeal, which I understand that. All I was asking was that there not be, that we don't, that we basically don't do Ms. Brown's lawyer's work. Uh, if, uh, if the court stops us from enforcement, that's fine, but I would think that after two decisions, that we would have the city being on the neighborhood's side. Uh, I can tell the votes are not here, so, uh, I will just drop the issue, but, uh, again, I guess that shows we don't really have much regard for the State, um, State Appellate Court, and...
Mr. Kling, let me point out, you know, I think the court ordered a call for the dance studio to start busing people in. Our officers can't enforce that, they can't, what would they charge them with, not following the court order? The only thing that can be charged with is contempt of court by not following the court order. So, our officers, number one, don't have anything to charge them with. Number two, if this Council tried to do something that is beyond the purview of the city, or she did appeal, if she has lost business, we would be liable for that. If, uh, she closed down, we would be liable for that. If the whole building became vacant and then couldn't be sold for what she has in it, we would, we would stand some terrific financial liability. So, we have to be careful through this, just as an administration, to be careful. Also, the court order is something that, you know, is, is the court order by a judge, by a Circuit Judge, uh, with her and the neighborhood. We can't enforce that, that is a contempt of court enforcement, uh, and we are writing tickets in there for people with no left turns, isn't that right, Chief Jackson? Okay.
There, uh, I'm gonna have some phone calls. When these phone calls come to me, I'm gonna start referring them out to others. Uh, keep in mind, those in the neighborhood have had, uh, some issues as far as real estate values because of the, um, the traffic problems going on. So, I mean, it's, it's a two-edged sword, and, uh, they, at my request, did not come. I thought they were gonna be coming this morning. I'd said, well, let's, you know, kind of try it not to. But the, the consensus of the Council is, we'll, to wait and revisit it in two weeks. Uh, I'll, I certainly understand that, and, um, we'll see what happens.
So, Ms. Kling, you have a motion on the floor that's been seconded by Dr. Showers. Are you withdrawing your motion?
Based upon what I've heard in the minutes, or based on the discussion, yes, I'll, I'll withdraw it.
Ms. Kling has withdrawn his motion. Is that okay with you, Dr. Showers?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Kling, you're still up, if you have anything else to say?
Mr. President, I, I believe, uh, that's enough for one night.
Thank you. Dr. Showers.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I want the record to reflect that, uh, members from the Johnson High School alumni, again, in is present at our meeting tonight, and, uh, want to ask, is the Chief of Police here tonight?
Uh, Chief Jackson is here.
No, I said, is the Chief of Police here?
No, sir, he had, uh, activity tonight.
Okay, uh, the last two times that we've had council meeting, and I've asked for the Chief's presence, uh, he's not been here. And, uh, uh, Mr. President, I have, uh, five items that I'd like to present, beginning with this one. I was delighted this week to visit, uh, Mountview Elementary School. Uh, the group that was here tonight, uh, did their first presentation there, uh, with the elementary school students. Uh, bullying, stop bullying. They did an excellent job with the group there. I, along with Mr. Kling, today went to Ridge Crest, and they did a similar presentation to the elementary school students there, uh, today. And I was delighted, uh, to be a part of that. Uh, and I say that not to hurt anybody's feeling, uh, the incident that took place in another city, uh, at one of the schools, uh, certainly we don't want that to happen in Huntsville, Alabama. I attended, uh, this week, a ribbon-cutting, uh, at Davis Hills. Uh, the ASFL, uh, had a, uh, ceremony that acknowledged the contribution of the Connolly and Ballard... family. Mrs. Conley, Ollie Conley, started the first academy there 25 years ago, and so she and the family was certainly acknowledged by the superintendent and others for their support of the program there at Davis Hills. Saturday, in fact, this Saturday, I will be attending the Draper Memorial Church, Church of God in Christ. They're having their Sunday School workshop, and I will be attending that particular workshop. Now, on the 17th of this month, the annual UNCF Gala Dinner will be at the VBC. Mr. President, you know, time passes, we've always supported that effort, and of course, I'll be going there to support Oakwood University at this particular opportunity. Then on the 19th, that Saturday, the Oakwood Alumni Weekend. This event is also at the VBC, and of course, I'll be bringing greetings, as I've done for the last 25 years, at that particular ceremony there at the VBC. And of course, I would be remiss if I would not say this to the public. The public is invited to this Alumni Weekend. That particular weekend generates, Mr. Kling, a lot of revenues for the city of Huntsville. Is Mr. Taylor still here? Anyway, Mr. President, that ends mine for the night.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Oshewski?
First of all, I got to give some thanks. I drug Shane Davis and Kathy Martin and Terry Hadfield down to Lauderdale Ditch with me over issues we've had with Lauderdale Ditch for four or five years. If they turn in anything about getting their shoes cleaned, don't give it to them, because I warned, Kathy Martin, maybe I'd help her out, but the other two, they were told not to come down with their boots. It was a mess out there, and they're going to work with me to try and help out the backup of the water that comes in from that part, and we're pleased to. Went from there over to Renwood and Woodmere and had some issues with the creek there, and as always, they are, they're very helpful, and I wouldn't trade those guys and gals for nothing. I wanted to share with you that, Chief Jackson, you don't have to come up, but if you could just take a note for me, I, this ain't bad, I just, I've had one of my constituents that has seen an officer driving too fast, and I sent it through Captain Cory, and he sent it up. That's been about a week now, and I'm looking for some, you know, some answers on, and this person wasn't the typical I get, which is normally they say somebody was speeding, and they didn't give me a number. Their numbers are in those emails. I'm just looking for a little feedback on it. Thank you. I get a lot of these, and I'm not sure who handles this, but I can say in my district, but I would assure that everybody's district's got the same issue with dangling cables and wires off of cable TV, you know, all those kind of different kind of cables and stuff, to the point where some of them, when they're cut, they just let them hang there, or they let them run down the pole, and then they wrap them up, which I'm not sure I really want that either. And my constituents are taking pictures and stuff, but I talked to the mayor today, so I'm going to pass on to my group that they just need to take pictures and follow that application that they have on their cellphones now, and send those in, and we'll get the right folks out to do what, to make it look more professional than right now. And I brought, I mean, I feel like I'm one of the three-minute folks out there. I got some nice pictures of dangling wires just right down in my district, and this is just a few. I mean, it's really more prevalent than you think it is. It's actually pretty bad. So, I'd like to, I'd like to have somebody, first of all, I'd like to find out, my own preference, who is it that handles that in our city would go out and take care of that? Or do we?
ITS. Sometimes it cuts into...
That, I'm not going, we don't need to have a debate on it, but I'm becoming a little bit of a professional on this. We don't even know whose cables they are. They could be four different outfits, and so what happens is nobody does anything. So, what I'm trying to get at is ITS, if that's who we call, great, but the picture mayor is what I'm trying to get at, and then once the picture's done, I'm assuming ITS will then send somebody, is that what we're saying, somebody will go out there, look at it, determine which cable company, TV company, or all the above, its cable is, and get them to fix it or is it something we can handle?
Well, we'll check also with Huntsville Utilities, see if we can get some help from them, because we want to make sure we don't cut a power line in the midst of all that, so thank you. We'll figure that one out.
That was really cute, Mayor. I hope you don't cut a power line either. You gotta be darned, man. I'd like to see you do that to one of these other guys sometime, but that's okay. I love you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Kling, were you trying to get my attention before?
Mr. President, I want to, I want to correct something. A lot of issues. In fairness, on this discussion, I was incorrect. I had emailed Mr. Joffreyon about enforcement of something else, and that was what he had responded to with, "Yes, we'll take care of it." It was not about this. The first response I'd got, I'd sent him two emails, and the first response I got concerning this specific issue was this morning, a little bit after 10 o'clock, but the, he had, the thing that he had responded in the affirmative was a whole different issue, and I just want to correct that for fairness.
Thank you. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick things. My trip to Montgomery was an enjoyable trip, although, Mayor, I wasn't successful in terms of bringing back more of our gasoline tax to North Alabama. I did try, and I feel like Mr. Hamilton over there would be a witness for me that I did make that an issue. As you all know, we only get right now, and I learned it's not even 55 cents, basically. The legislature takes 43% of that off of the top, and then we get another 80% of the 55%, somewhere in there. So, we're certainly not getting our pro-rata share, but I did hear the governor say that he is going to revisit that and look at that. Other counties are getting $4.57 back on their gasoline dollar, so we just want to get closer to our pro-rata share. Also, the inmate labor crew this week did an outstanding job. The inmate labor and the inmate labor supervisors, Chief Jackson, if you want to relay that to Chief Morris, they actually were willing to come out. They cleaned the parkway, they cleaned I-565 Airport Road and other areas in the city, and we are trying to keep Huntsville beautiful, and what they're doing is very, very vital to that. Also, I want to commend the police department on the way they handled the situation last week where unfortunately, a citizen was killed, but the SWAT team and Huntsville Police Department, and I believe the Sheriff's Department was involved in that also, and I'm happy that we didn't lose an officer. I did get a chance to go and buy and visit with Officer Jason Moore on that Saturday as he was being released from the hospital. I was expecting for him to be laid up in the bed, and there he was, standing right beside me, and he told me, he said, "You know, Mr. Culver," he said, "you taught me dare in the fifth grade." So, that was really, really amazing. So, we're happy that he's home recovering well. Also, we have a town hall meeting scheduled for April the 21st at Wall Highway Baptist Church. We're going to be in the basement. Don't have an awful lot of room there, but Mayor, whatever department heads are willing to come out and help us resolve some of the concerns in those communities will be greatly appreciated, and also, Mayor, and I know you have a very busy schedule, but if you can get a moment to come out for a few minutes, we certainly would appreciate you as well. The general public is invited, although this particular town hall meeting is, the primary purpose is to address concerns in the Lanier Lakes community, but any time that we have a town hall meeting, all of my colleagues here on the council certainly are invited, and the general public as well, Ms. Reed are likewise invited. So, I believe that is all I have, Mr. President. Thank you so kindly, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Culver. I want to offer my thanks to Coach Patterson and Steve Ivey and all the Parks and Recreation Crew. I was able to attend opening day at the International League at Mayfair Park, and the fields looked great, and the kids had a great time, and it's so important to our community building that we have these parks and rec opportunities for all our citizens, and I know Mr. Kling joined me at that, at the International League, and so did the mayor, and there's more to come. This Saturday, we'll be at Oak Park. The Civic League is opening up, and they always have a great parade, and have so for many, many, many years. So, want to thank all the guys and all the girls and staff that makes those parks great. Also want to echo Councilman Culver's statements on Officer Moore. My prayers are with him and his family. I can't imagine what they go through, police officers, firefighters, all our city employees that deal with public safety, not knowing what's going to happen to them. Every day they go out, or every night they go out on their shift, so it's always heartbreaking when we hear these incidents, and we're glad that Officer Moore is recovering, and certainly my prayers are with him and his family. Some of the Huntsville High baseball players had wanted to know if I was going to make it to the second game of the doubleheader tonight, and since they started at four, I guess I'm not going to. But Huntsville and Grissom are playing. It's a real big game in the area that I represent, and Huntsville won the first game on Tuesday. They're playing again this afternoon. Grissom was winning, and then they're playing a third game after the second game, so it'll be exciting to see who won when I get out of this meeting tonight. We're now at 13 unfinished business items for action. 13A is ordinance number 14-220 for the annexation of land on the east side of US Highway 431 South and on the north side of Caldwell Lane. This was introduced March 27, 2014, at the regular council meeting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Ms. Leto, can you explain this, please?
Yes, this is 17.19 acres of property.
The whole earth.
It's the whole earth. Here we go. It's the property that you see here is on the east side of Highway 431 South and on the north side of Caldwell Lane. It is 17.19 acres of property. It's currently vacant. It's decided for proposed commercial development, and there are annexing for city services.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're at 14 new business items for introduction. 14A is introduction of his ordinance concerning the annexation of land on the south side of Olmsted Road and west of Taylor Road. We're now at 15 new business items for consideration or action. The chair would like to hold 15B as in beta, 15I, 15BB, and 15CC. Are there other items you'd like to hold?
15P.
15P as in Paul. Are there any other items? Keeping in mind that 15Z and 15AA have been deleted. So, right now, I have 15B, 15I, 15P as in Paul, 15BB, and 15CC. Are there other items? Hearing non-15A is a resolution authorizing mayor to a cost reimbursement agreement with the Northeast Alabama Traffic Safety Office in the amount of $86,000 for traffic enforcement. C is an ordinance to amend budget ordinance number 13-630 by changing appropriating funding for various departments and funds. D is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donations. E is a resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Huntsville and Academy LTD doing business as Academy Sports Plus Outdoors. F is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement with British Soccer, a division of Challenger Sports Corporation. G is a resolution authorizing a standard services agreement between Manpower Group U.S. Inc. and the City of Huntsville, Alabama, for Manpower to provide staffing services to hire and process seasonal employees. H is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for the cooperative maintenance of public right-of-way. J is a resolution authorizing mayor to amend the contract with Reed Contract Services Inc. for Redstone Gateway Package I-1 Mask Grading, Fine Grading, Erosion Control, Storm, and Pond Liner, Project Number 6512 SP23 by change order number two. K is a resolution authorizing mayor to end agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for grade, drain, base, pave, signals, and signing for US Highway 72 from Shields Road to Maisel Road, Project Numbers NH-002, and City of Huntsville, Project Number 6514 RD03. L is a resolution authorizing mayor to release agreement with LBYD Inc. for Redstone Gateway Package I-I Lake F Expansion, Project Number 6512 SP23. M is a resolution authorizing mayor to license agreement with Norfolk Southern Railroad Company for Church Street and Pratt Avenue widening and realignment, Phase I, Project Number 6501 RD05, and Aldot, Project Number STPHV-4500200. N is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement with Norfolk Southern Railroad Company for preliminary engineering services for Greenbrier Road, Phase II, Project Number 6513 RD01. O is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement with Stevens Appraisal Services LLC for appraisal services for Zert Road improvements, City of Huntsville, Project Number 6506 RD01, and Aldot, Project Number STPHV-8507600. Q is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement with Garver LLC for engineering design services for Zert Road improvements, Project Number 6506 RD01, and STPHV-8507600. R is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement with Croy Engineering LLC for engineering design services for Gateway Greenway Phase III Parking Lot, Project Number 6514 WP01. S is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement with Garver LLC for engineering services for 2014 Flow Monitoring Program Annual Operations Maintenance Data Analysis and Reporting, Project Number 6514 SP20. T is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement with Centus Corporation for Uniform and Workwear, Rental, and Laundry Service. U is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute modification number 14 of the supplemental development agreement, TIFF5 Series 2010A, between the City of Huntsville and LW Redstone Company LLC. V is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute modification number 11 of the supplemental development agreement, TIFF5 Series 2012B, between the City of Huntsville and LW Redstone Company LLC. W is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke BB&amp;T letter credit number 9641664187001 for development agreement between the City of Huntsville and CBEL Jones Farms Southwest LLC. X is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke South Point Bank Letter Credit Number 95004012 for Nature's Landing, Hether Reserve, Phase IV Subdivision. Y is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Letter Credit Number 362000808661 for Stratford and McMullen Cove subdivision. Chair moves consolidation approval of 15A, 15C through H, 15J through O, 15Q through Y.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. All those in favor of consolidation approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at 15B. 15B is a resolution to classify the fund balance of the general fund consistent with requirements of state law, city ordinance, and resolutions and accounting standards as October 1, 2013. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Mr. Taylor, could you explain this, please?
Yes, council members, we do this once a year when our audit is complete, which has just happened on March 31st. Most of the items that are listed in this resolution are actions that have already been taken by the council by way of other ordinances or resolutions. Some are not, and it's just appropriate because of all of the different restrictions we have on how we can use our money, that we just set for the record what those final balances were, and that the council affirm its decision regarding each one of those. There's a footnote with respect to each one that explains why it has to be set aside or why we've chosen to attach a label to it for some specific purpose. So, this is just a comprehensive assessment of all of those final year-end numbers.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Were there any surprises to you on that list?
No, there are not. There are not.
Further discussion?
Mr. President, I think Mr. Taylor's been a little modest, but I think should be pointed out that the city received a very good report on that audit for the past fiscal year that was closed out, and Mr. Taylor and his staff did a real good job.
I agree.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kling, that's right. With respect to the list, there are no surprises. We didn't have any significant adjustments from what we expected when our year-end closed last year, so these numbers are consistent with what we thought they would be six months ago. Mr. Kling's referring to the audit that was just released. The city received a clean opinion with respect to that, so we're proud of that.
We're proud of that as well. Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. 15I is a resolution authorizing mayor... 15I is a resolution authorizing mayor to modify the agreement with Land Design Solutions, Inc. for design and construction administration services for Maple Hill Cemetery improvements, Project Number 6514 SP 01 by modification number one. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Doc Showers. Ms. Key, just my question is, why is it taking six more months or whatever the length of delay is?
Well, actually, Land Design Solutions had some complications with the other folks that were doing some surveying and, you know, some geotechnical work. So that's actually why it's been delayed.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. P is a resolution authorizing mayor to temporary easement and agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Building Church, Project Number 6514 SP 21.
Vote to approve? Second.
Motion by Doc Showers, second by Mr. Culver. Ms. Martin, could you explain this, please?
Yes, council, this is an agreement with the Building Church. We are granting them a temporary construction easement across Indian Creek Greenway so they can extend sanitary sewer surfaces to their new facility. It allows them to close 20 feet of the greenway for 48 hours and to repair it and install proper pedestrian control to get around their construction site.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. BB is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and RCP Merchant Walk, LLC.
Vote to approve? Second.
Motion by Doc Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Davis, can you explain this?
Council members, this is the last piece that you need to vote on to solidify the merchant's redevelopment along the parkway, which contains the anchor of Whole Foods. This is the parking lease, which guarantees exclusive use by the city to have control, but puts all the responsibilities for maintenance, upkeep, and total replacement of the garage on the developer, and it also ensures the developer pays property taxes on that garage.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? Ms. Kling?
Is there a ballpark estimate as far as when the development will be opened up to the public?
Councilman Kling, they're currently setting up staging for the temporary relocation of Regions Bank at the corner of Bob Wallace and Service Roads. And demo is scheduled to start in June and should be open 14 months after that. So we're looking at late summer, early fall of next year. The whole center should be open.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. CC is a request for council approval for off-premise beer and wine license for Publix, Alabama, Inc. doing business as Publix located at 310 Pelham Avenue, Huntsville, Alabama. The reason for this is Publix wants to open on May 7, 2014. The License Review Committee can't approve and issued license till May 9, 2014. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Doc Showers. Council members, I was aware of this. We're trying to help Publix out and obviously increase our sales tax revenue, and it's a good thing, I think, for Publix and the neighborhood. Further discussion?
Mr. President, I'm going to support it, and I know we have had a few times in the past where the city council, because of extenuating circumstance, has approved something that because of the schedule, the liquor license review committee couldn't get to. So this is not that abnormal. But, you know, we do hope that the departments can kind of work and things can be scheduled far enough in advance. Applications can come in so that, you know, this becomes the exception and not the norm.
Yes, absolutely. I agree. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have three vacations of easements. The chair moves consolidation and approve 16A, 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Second by Doc Showers. Discussion? All those in favor consolidating, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now at non-roster communications from the public, Ms. Reed.
I'll make it quick. First, I would, I'm not getting involved, but I do, would like to say that the people that's talking about the fence and the home over there, I drove by one day, and if you would drive by and just see what's on one side of that home and that property as to what's going on over there, I would be afraid myself to live over there. It's a group home of men. So, I mean, drive around over there. Y'all drive around and try to help those people figure out what you want them to do to make that safe over there. I mean, you just need to drive around in the daytime, find out what's going on. I want to thank Joy McGee for the hot dogs and the green team and all the friendliness and the plants and the Glad Bags. Thank you, Mayor, too, for what went on in front of City Hall last Friday. And it's going to go on Saturday at Hayes Preserve. They've got plants and everything. It's a great day. So get out there early, or you won't get your plant. I want to thank you for that. I also went to the county commission meeting, and it concerns me. It says, authorize chairman to execute agreement with City of Huntsville regarding long-term water purchase, Water Department, County Attorney. That sounds like a real good thing, and I hope it is. Hope they pay their fair share. I hope the City of Huntsville never has to turn out, turn off their water in the summertime because we're short of water. We don't want that to happen because we're trying to help the county and development and everything. We need all the money we can get, of course, but cities first. Thank you. Have a good weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to try to clarify some of the comments that Mr. Joffreyon made about concerning the fence, to make sure I understand. First, he did clarify that it is a privilege to have a fence in the right-of-way. And I do truly appreciate that the council on July 25th did grant me that privilege. Everyone voted in acceptance to that. And he also mentioned conversations with Engineering Department. Before I built the fence, we did contact Engineering Department. We contacted, I believe it was Mr. Ron Adams in the Engineering Department to make sure that everything was acceptable. And we were told what we had in mind was, the conversations he mentioned with Mr. Davis and Ms. Martin all happened after the fence was put up, as I said, after all these investments were made. So I guess where my confusion comes in, I keep hearing that there was a concept of the fence. The city had a concept of the fence, but that was never communicated back to me. So I was trying to figure out where we lost communication in that, that we had such a huge misunderstanding about what I intended to do and what the city thought was acceptable.
Is that a question for me or a question for the council?
I guess the council, Mr. Joffreyon, mentioned that that's not what, that's not what the city had in mind. The resolution doesn't specify what the city had in mind. The resolution specifies nothing about what is acceptable for the fence. And his explanation was that it caused traffic problems. Well, the Monday after the fence started, the fence started going up on Thursday. The Monday after, I guess based on a call someone had made, the city traffic engineer, Dennis Thompson, showed up to inspect the fence and look at it. And he said there were no problems. He checked for visibility of the neighboring property, and I'm assuming visibility on the street. He measured to make sure that we were in compliance. And the words then was, everything seems to be okay. He says, as a matter of fact, the only thing I see wrong is one of the no-parking signs that's in front of the property is now going to be hidden by the fence. Would you like that moved? And we said, that would be great. Thank you. They came out and moved it. So again, I guess my point is, we keep hearing about all these problems, but these problems haven't, weren't brought up before. They were brought up after the investment was made, after the license was granted with no restrictions.
Okay, and I guess if you're asking the council, I can answer the, I've met with you many times, and this certainly wasn't the fence that we discussed and you described. And I don't know what the Engineering Department told you, and that's just my recollection. You know, we've met with you several times.
Absolutely.
And we've talked about much smaller fences. We talked about metal fences. We talked about, you know, chains. You talked about a tall fence on your own property, but you never gave this description. But I'm not involved with letting this go or not. I think Mr. Joffreyon would have to answer that. Could you answer anything else for Mr. Wright?
Well, I can't, I can't say anything about conversations you may have had with Ron Adams. Only Ron Adams can speak to that, and Mr. Davis can talk about conversations he's had with you. I know that as part of our internal discussions, the only conversation we ever had was a fence of, you know, four, five, or six feet in height that was consistent with the, with the architecture and the historic district. And the, what was contemplated was something in the nature of a picket fence or a chain fence, as you described. No one ever mentioned anything about a 12-to-15-foot-high fence. Mr. Davis, I don't, you can share your comments if you want to about your meetings with me.
Mr. Davis, if you want to, please go ahead.
Yeah, council members, I guess when this originally started to ask for the use of public right-of-way, the legal counsel for Mr. Wright contacted the city and was transferred to Engineering Department. And it's been passed through, through me and Kathy Martin mainly. But the legal counsel asked to use five feet of city right-of-way for a four-to-five-foot period style to match, to go along with the period of the house. And naturally, we want to see, you know, redevelopment in North Huntsville, just like we do in all parts of the city. So we took that into consideration and said, hey, if that will help with the remodel of the house and it being time period, it would be a good shot in the arm for the Oakwood Avenue area. So then that's when we brought the council for your approval to allow that use within that right-of-way. And then once construction started and the size of the post, the traffic hazard is, the fence is such of a height and scale that the posts are so deep in the ground, they will not break away should a car hit it. It's in our public right-of-way. So if we were to have a traffic accident from a crash of that post, we are liable. It is in our right-of-way. So we, we just don't want to put the city at that kind of liability. We've told Mr. Wright that, you know, if he wants to take it out of the city right-of-way as far as the height of the fence, there's nothing we do to prohibit that, to put it on his own property. We just can't have that size scale in public right-of-way because it's just liability for the city. We're not against the style fence. It just needs to be on private property. You know, a four, four-to-five-foot picket-style fence, if someone hit it, it would break away, just like one of our speed limit signs, and would not harm anyone.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, did I answer your questions?
Yeah, may I, may I address those comments?
You may address any comments to me, but your time's really up, and do you have quick comments?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I agree with Mr. Davis. I think the fence should be on my property, and I think the city should not have liability. And the easy solution for that, in my opinion, is the city could vacate part of that right-of-way so that it is not a liability for them. You know, he mentioned the safety part because the posts are so far in the ground, but I can't see the difference between those large posts and all the utility poles that are in the ground in the city right-of-way. Do those not also pose a liability for the city?
Jessica May? We're probably liable for everything?
Okay.
So, yes.
Okay. If I could just ask one more question.
Real quick.
My recollection of the conversation we had about the fence is different. And these conversations that Mr. Davis and Ms. Joffreyon talk about of the fence being four or five feet, I was never involved in those conversations. You know, if, if my lawyers were involved in those conversations, I must have been misrepresented because that information never came back to me. And it clearly is not in the resolution that you all approved. So again, it seems a bit unfair to me that having not specified any, any restrictions, the fact that I checked on everything before I built it, it seems unfair to me that we are now talking about revoking the license based on, and especially based on the fact that the people who drive up and down that street every day, who live there, who have suffered through their harassment and other problems, they don't seem to find a problem with it.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling?
Just a legal issue. I know everybody's throwing this around, but if that's a historic house, does the Historic Preservation Commission come in as far as approving design?
No, it's not in the historic district.
Okay. I didn't know if it's historic. Okay.
Does anyone else wish to address the council? Ma'am, if you'll go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Dee Johnson, and I live at 2108 Kildare Street. And whenever Mr. Joffreyon made the comment about the size of the fence, it bothers me because this is a historical home that is a large home. And for her to be able to have privacy, for her to sit on her front porch to have privacy, it does require a larger fence. And people have not seen the outcome of what this fence is going to look like. And yet, if you're going to, if there's no limit to the size of a fence, I don't understand why she cannot build a fence up to give herself privacy on her property.
Ma'am, she can on her property. We're talking about the city's right-of-way. It's two different pieces of property. And Mr. Wright knows he can bring the fence back and put it on his property and build it as high as he would like. And that would protect the neighbors, just like you're asking. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Mr. Juern?
We're adjourned.